We'll be ready to begin momentarily. I think we need the secretary to take care of the record. If I may, I'll call this meeting of the Salina City Planning Commission to order. Welcome to all of you here. The first item on the agenda today is the approval of the summary minutes from October 4th. Unless there are additions or corrections, I'll hear a motion to approve. I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Our first item is a public hearing item, the continuation of the public hearing on the conditional use permit application CU-11-7. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we're going to do is give you an overview of the staff report that we prepared. This item was originally held a public hearing on September 20th. And in the intermediate period, we had some discussions about developing findings of fact and potential conditions to go with a conditional use permit. And since that time, on the October 10th, on first reading, and last night on second reading, the city commission formally adopted a text amendment change that made tattoo parlors and body piercing studios a conditional use that could be applied for in the C4 district. So you now have jurisdiction to make a decision on this case. And as we summarize, this involves a building that's at the corner of Iron and North Fifth Street, the northwest corner, and it involves a building owned by Jim Raven Camp that has seven tenant spaces. And the plan or proposal before you is to take that westernmost tenant space and to lease that out for conversion to a tattoo parlor and body piercing studio. And what was done by Mr. Raven Camp was first of all to file an amendment to the C4 zoning district regulations to take that use and move it from the previously prohibited use to a conditional use. And again, there was discussion on that at your public hearing on September the 20th. And now with the city commission action, it's appropriate for this to come back for a decision. And the tenant space we're talking about is the westernmost one, closest to the alley. It has a front door and front-facing window on iron. It's adjacent, as I mentioned, to an alley and to an entrance to loft apartments that are addressed as 107 East Iron. Mr. Raven Camp has a number of other tenant spaces that are either occupied or he's seeking tenants for. So your role in this case and this hearing is to evaluate the applicant's proposed use of the property and determine whether a tattoo parlor and body piercing studio in this location would be compatible with surrounding uses. This hearing process allows you to receive public input about and establish appropriate conditions for approval for the proposed use. So again, there was a hearing. You've reviewed the minutes of that hearing. Comments came at that hearing from Phil Kleema, representing the Lee District Board of Advisors, the property owner, and you voted at that time to recommend that tattoo parlors and body piercing studios be removed from the prohibited list and moved to the conditional list. And then you voted to eight to zero to postpone consideration of the application to October 4th. And it was anticipated at that time that the city commission would take this up on the 3rd, and they did not. So the item was moved to today's hearing date. Again, we've got a C4 property with 100% lot coverage and zero setback and with parking provided both in a public parking lot and on the public street. In looking at the welfare and convenience of the public, the applicant has indicated that approval of this would put a vacant downtown tenant space into active use. The applicant believes that since all activities will take place within the building, it should not be noticeable or have an impact on neighboring properties. There's no physical changes to the building as proposed. Because this is an existing storefront space, there should be no impact on public utilities. And as you know, in the downtown area, businesses are not required to provide their own parking. So parking is available on the street, on iron, and in behind where there's a publicly-owned city lot. Your options or potential actions would be to approve the conditional use application as submitted upon finding that the requirements of Section 42-597 have been satisfied. And what we have done is attach to your report a potential listing of those findings as it relates to that section of the code. You could approve the application subject to specified conditions or revisions to the plan for adding a parlor and body piercing studio to this storefront. You could postpone consideration of this application if you feel you need to be provided additional information. You could deny the application if the required findings cannot be made or if the condition believes that the proposed use would cause injury to the surrounding properties. What was done is, in preparation of this report, the planning staff developed a list of potential conditions that were indicated in discussions with the commission about concerns, about concerns from neighboring property owners, in an attempt to address that. Subsequent to that, city staff met on a broader basis after the city commission action and also with the assistance of Mr. Bankston, the city attorney. And what we have, if John could put those up on the screen. The thought was, as relates to number one there, city planning staff looked at the representations from the applicants that indicated that their plan was to open at 11:00 and be open no later than 8:00. The question was raised, why have limitations, especially starting time limitations, that were any different than any other downtown business? So what you have in your packet, I believe, says 11:00 a.m. This says 8:00. The original draft talked about not having any wall signs at all. This has been modified to allow for wall signs that are consistent with the downtown design guidelines, and any exterior wall signs would have to be approved by the Lee District Design Review Board. Window lettering does not have to be approved, but it is in fact limited to 33% of the window area. Number three there, we wanted to tell you what the thinking was behind that. We've had some discussions with the applicants and the owners about that. The idea in the first sentence there is that when we use the term partition or demising wall, that is something that's not a floor-to-ceiling permanent wall. It is something that would be similar to what you could have in a store or an office setting or whatever, which basically is a standalone partition or thing you might have to create an office cubicle in a workplace. A demising wall might be a wall that was placed but didn't go all the way to the ceiling and wouldn't necessarily have to be attached to either wall. We've had some discussions with the applicant about the use of a rod and a side obscuring curtain between the waiting area. But that first condition there is, the purpose there is to give the clients some privacy between the waiting area and the area where the work is actually performed. And it's also, there was concern expressed about passersby or Oakdale students passing by in front and having some visual screen between the front window and where the work was actually performed on clients. The other aspect of that was what takes place back in the work area, and that is a recommendation that if there are multiple stations there in the rear, that there also be a movable side obscuring curtain or partition, similar to what you might have in a hospital setting or healthcare setting to provide individual privacy for those work areas if there's more than one. And that would, what we're referring to there is, we've cited the words there, you know, work done on a private body part, and that's actually defined by the city code. So if that condition is something that you view as appropriate, then Mr. Bankston is recommending that we be more specific, and since that's already defined in the city code, that it be a private body part as described in Salina Code Section 647-15-1. So that, what you see on the screen there, if that's agreeable as a condition, then that would be modified after the word "body part" to include as described in Salina Code Section The fourth condition there deals with the concern expressed about, again, minors or schoolchildren passing by and not having the lobby or waiting area there have wall art or posters depicting the tattoo art. There was some discussion about catalogs or table books that would have examples of tattoo art, but that it not be posted on the walls. There are quite a detailed set of Kansas statutes and administrative regulations. Again, the Kansas Board of Cosmetology is the administrative body administering those. But Item 5 there deals with making sure that somewhere within the front lobby area that the establishment does post their license, which is required by law for them to be engaged in tattooing or body piercing. That remainder of that just basically says and repeats what state law has, that if the operation or the establishment is, if there are sufficient grounds that they have violated a state law, then the conditional use permit could be suspended or revoked. I just read an example this weekend, it was in the state of Iowa, and the license of a tattoo artist was revoked for doing work on minors without the consent of their parents. That would be an example of that type of violation. Item 6 there is basically a repeat of something that's already in the state law. Item 7 there is an attempt to, in the case of a business owner-manager, they can't always be responsible for any type of loitering or activity that's occurring outside or near the business. And it basically asks the business owner or manager to be a good neighbor, and if there's issues with people around their business, that they have a responsibility to contact the police department to deal with that. Item 8 just basically allows city staff to go in and inspect the premises to verify compliance with these conditions. Item 9 requests that, again, we're looking at this as a specific piece of property, but if there is a change in business ownership, that there's an obligation to notify the city of that, that this conditional use permit is limited to the 111 tenant space, which contains about 700 square feet. And then Item 11 there just indicates that if it's determined at some later time that some material fact about this conditional use was misrepresented to you in the application or the information submitted to you at any of the hearings, or if it is simply operated in a way that it becomes a nuisance that you would have the ability to modify or revoke this conditional use permit. And so that, you have in your packet, something very close to this, but this was re-reviewed and re-discussed amongst city staff and with some advice from Mr. Bankston as well. And so these conditions that you have handed out there separately and what we've shown on the screen is what we are recommending as possible conditions that would go with this item. And then what we've done in more detail was given you some findings of fact as to how this application and proposed use relates to the factors in the ordinance that you're supposed to consider in the case of a conditional use permit application. We've also given you a map, and John, you might be able to put that up, that question came up, when we're talking about the C4 district, what exactly are we talking about? And the C4 district, basically to get your bearings, this is Mulberry here and Elm up at the top, and it basically runs from Fourth Street over to Eighth Street. So when we speak to the C4 zoning district, it is that area and only that area within the city. So I think with that, I would be open to any questions you have about the staff report, the possible conditions that could be placed on the conditional use permit and the possible findings of fact. And again, what we indicated in there was that one of your options was for approval of the application upon finding that the requirements of Section 42-597-2 have been satisfied. And what we've added there is some findings of fact in support of how those findings could be satisfied by this application. So with that, be open to any questions. Mr. Bankston's here as well.
Are there questions of staff or by the commissioners? There being none, we'll hear from the applicant.
Jim Raven Camp, 652 South Santa Fe. I think Dean had the list that he has, you know, obviously I don't have any concern with what's on the conditions from the staff. And, you know, as far as myself, I would probably, and I've talked to him about incorporating this into the lease agreement, these conditions, you know, just in case, you know, just to put a little more emphasis on keeping it a professional and a professional business, I guess is what I want to say. But I would incorporate that into the lease, these conditions. And if they weren't being followed, then I would, that would give me the right to eliminate the lease agreement and negate it. And obviously, same thing, anything like the loitering or anything, obviously is in there, so it's all pretty well-covered. But, you know, I'd just like to say that, you know, everybody's approved this, the city commission obviously approved it yesterday from a prohibited to a conditional use. And it was a 5-0 vote, so I think that was a very important for that to be a 5-0 vote. And obviously, the Lee District Board and Downtown Board have approved it, you know, this is the second time they've approved it. So I just, I would ask that today that you would approve the conditional use for this business to operate at 111 East Iron. So, any questions?
Questions of the applicant?
Dean, I'm curious, how is loitering defined and how's that enforced in the downtown area?
Well, what we indicated was that I, in our staff report there, was that there is no, there's no general prohibition in the city code against loitering. There are some specific loitering provisions that deal with loitering in or about public and private schools. There's also a prohibition against loitering over at the municipal court and police station, but there is no general definition or prohibition against what would be described as loitering in the city code. There's things for disorderly conduct and things of that nature, but loitering itself is not an offense under the city code.
And this is where I would, I would put that in the lease, that if there is any, that it would negate the lease, and it would be terms for negating the lease agreement between the two of us. So, because that, obviously you guys know that that's always been a concern of mine. And, anyway, I just don't want that to happen, so I am and have talked to him about putting that in the lease, so it won't happen. And obviously, I'd be the one policing it. And trust me, I'm around downtown, you know, every day, and I do watch things, so. And if there's any complaints or anything too, that would also help me, so. Questions?
Other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Raven Camp. We hear from the public. Is there anybody that'd like to address this issue?
Ken Stromberg, 2732 East Shipton Road. I do have something I'd like to hand out. I'm going to cover today.
Sure.
We've spoke at previous meetings, and one of the things, I just feel it's my obligation to back up and defend my family and some of the things that have been said in the previous meeting, so that's really why I wanted to speak today. There've been a lot of things said about my wife and her statements from the previous meeting, where she, basically when we received notification, she did some research, and based on that research, we had some concerns about this application. And so we voiced those in the meeting. Really don't have anything against tattoos or people with tattoos. I have family members with tattoos. We have friends with tattoos. I've employed people with tattoos. Tattoos isn't the issue. The real concern we had was based on some of the research we'd done, and that's what we had presented. Since that time, we, first of all, noticed on her Facebook page that she just created for her business recently, if you go to the next slide, we started to get some postings like this. You know, again, this one quoting scripture about us judging and et cetera. And the next slide, you know, it talks about, again, you know, lots of comments about what are talking about, you know, we've not stated anything about our Christian beliefs or anything to that nature with regards to tattoos. Again, that's personal choice, and I don't have any issue with that, nor do we discriminate against that. But, again, our position from the beginning has been just questioning the conditional use permit and the acceptability in this specific area. So if you go to the next slide, here's another one where she is basically called ignorant, and more comments to that effect. So we started to dig in a little deeper, okay, what prompted this? Where did this come from? And we found this posting, where the applicant actually called her a hate-mongering woman and stands in opposition to the shop, and will have her angry mob and pitchforks ready to reach her stupidity and hate. And like I said, the reason I wanted to speak today was just to bring this out in the open, that this is what has been going on with her and her business, and comments about her based on her, what she said in this meeting and in this forum in the open, not out on Facebook or any other social media. You know, there's just a few more examples here on the next page, where she's called crazy. The next one's similar. You know, lady is crazy, real crazy. Just even one of the local businesses, I just want to throw this in here, found this as well, where the health of downtown is more threatened by the lawyers, accountants, insurance offices, and overly restricted city officials. Now, again, this is just information, there's a lot more out there. I just wanted to put a few things together to demonstrate, you know, some of our concern. And this, the next one actually talks about, you know, professionalism and reputation. And is this the way that we want to treat our fellow businesses in the downtown area? Is this professionalism we want to have exist there? And again, just one more, you know, definition of a bigot, et cetera. So the only other comment I have related to, you know, the conditional use permit and the conditions on that, again, this is from Wichita, Sedgwick County Unified Code, is they actually require a 200-foot buffer between any residential area and a tattoo parlor. And that is one suggestion that I would have to this commission, is that we look into something like this, being to the fact that we have about 12 feet between the two entrances to our loft apartments and this business. And just a little background on my wife and her business in downtown area, she's been here in that location over five years now. She, after receiving her doctor of chiropractic degree, she opened her office in Overland Park, Kansas, in the downtown area, ran a successful practice there. After we met, we considered where our future was going to be, and based on the downtown area and the things that we looked at, and figured it might be worth trying to make a change, she was willing to sell her business and move to the downtown area here in Salina, and we started here and has been successful since. Had, you know, again, we purchased at the height of the real estate boom, but have never, have not regretted moving to this downtown area. It's been good for our family and good for the business, and hopefully good for the downtown people that come in to see her and visit the other businesses. So the one comment that she made before is, had that tattoo parlor been here next door when we were looking, we would have moved on and looked at other locations. So I just wanted to share that with the commission today. If nothing else, just to set the record straight, this is what we've experienced just for sharing our opinion. Again, have nothing against tattoos or people with tattoos. I work with them, I live with them, they're all, you know, just because I haven't chose to have one, that's my own personal preference, and they have that right as well. So, thank you. If there are any questions?
Ken, I'd just like to say I'm somewhat shocked, and, you know, my sympathies to you for this kind of backlash is something I can't be very proud of. My fellow citizens to have seen them conduct themselves in this manner, so I'm sorry that you just standing up and speaking for yourself brought you this kind of attention, so. Any other comments from the other commissioners? Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Is there other comment from the public?
Is there other comment from the public?
My name is Dagney Stromberg, I live at 2732 East Shipton in Salina and I own the business at 100 North Santa Fe, which also includes, includes the address at 107 East Iron, and I'm going to read my comments so that I can make, say what I mean to say without the adrenaline that's racing through me, causing my heart to race, short-circuiting my brain and causing me to reach for words and finding the wrong ones, as I did in the last meeting. This meeting is about whether or not a conditional use permit should be issued to Travis Thornhill and Dave Ritchie to open a tattoo parlor and body piercing studio at 111 East Iron. This location is less than 12 feet across an alley from my property and business at 100 North Santa Fe Avenue. I spoke out against the tattoo parlor being allowed downtown and especially being located at this location at the September 20th, 2011 meeting, using not uninfounded information but a 2009 study of body art deviance and the American College students done by a PhD sociology professor at Texas Tech University and the zoning code of Santa Clara City in California, which also cites other communities which have considered tattoo parlors in their cities. For this action, I have been labeled by Mr. Thornhill as a hate mongering woman. I have had a customer of Mr. Thornhill post judgmental scripture on my business Facebook page telling me not to judge. It has been implied that I hate and fear all people who have tattoos, this is not true. As an example, in June of 2010, a woman came into my office and gave me some business cards asking me to give them to anyone I knew who might need house cleaning services. Since time is one of the big issues in our household and keeping the house clean is time consuming, Ken and I decided to hire her to clean our house. She was the one who pointed out her sleeve tattoos as a possible reason not to hire her to clean our house. I was surprised that she had even brought her tattoos up. I'm not blind, of course, and I could see them, but they were not a part of my decision-making process in hiring her. As far as I was concerned, I was hiring a woman who had the guts and initiative to go door to door passing out cards, looking for work after being laid off, not a woman with tattoos. I also hired her to clean my, in my office. In the late fall of 2010, she was able to obtain a full-time job in an office and I could see the writing on the wall that she would not be cleaning our house for much longer. In January 2011, she decided to discontinue cleaning houses to spend more time with her family. I miss having my house cleaned, but am very careful about letting a stranger in my home when I am not home and have not replaced the service this woman gave to myself and my family. I will not give her name because I will not expose anyone to the venom that has come my way since I opposed Mr. Thornhill. People on Facebook have asked why we don't ask the tenants what they think about living next to a tattoo parlor, I can answer that. Our tenants have no more obligation than to complete a one-year lease, after that, the lease is month to month. If they decide to leave, they are not out anything. I am more worried about the leasability of an apartment with its entrance less than 12 feet from the entrance of a tattoo parlor. Most communities have a minimum separation between tattoo parlors and residences. I do not feel that 12 feet is sufficient separation between this parlor and the residences in my building. Once again, we are here to decide if a specific individual, Mr. Travis Thornhill, should open a tattoo parlor at 111 East Iron. Normally, people are on their best behavior when they are trying to get a permit to open a controversial business. If the venom spewed at me for opposing his proposed tattoo parlor is an example of his best behavior, I would hate to see his regular behavior. Please deny Mr. Thornhill's application to locate at 111 East Iron. This location would force both myself and my 11-year-old daughter, who is enrolled in virtual school, which she does at my office, to pass within arms' reach of this venomous man and his business on a daily basis in order to walk back and forth to our car. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Stromberg. Is there anyone else that'd care to address the commission?
Travis Thornhill, 834 North Barber, McPherson, Kansas. First off, I, it's unfortunate that we have to speak on these, on these, this public outrage and everything that has resulted from our last meeting, I'd like to clarify that any backlashing and anything that's, that's been put out there against Ms. Stromberg has not been in direct, in, in any direction towards me telling anybody to do anything. Unfortunately, you know, for her, her comments, you know, she, she may have been emotional and said some things she may not have meant to say at the last meeting, but it, it was covered by, by the news and it, it just became public information and unfortunately, it did offend quite a few people. We didn't have time to look through the, the whole Facebook thing, it's, it's a public thing, I can't prevent anybody from, from saying what they want to say and never did I direct them in any way towards who, who made those comments, it was, it was public knowledge, you can look up and down, you know, the comment I made on Facebook that was briefly put up there, probably didn't have enough time to read it, the only emotional response I actually had on there, which she was referring to, she assumed I was talking about her, that was actually in response to the very controversial poster flyer that was mailed out and it actually, it had nothing to do with Ms. Stromberg. At the time, nobody had stepped forward to claim responsibility for that poster and I was just speaking my public opinion on how offensive that poster was to me and as, as many of you know, if you, if you paid attention to what happened to the commissioners' meeting, you know, even one of the commissioners was upset about that poster. Again, if I could go back and apologize for anybody who's taken any, any action or upset Ms. Stromberg, you know, I, I really seriously apologize. Your name has never come up, I have never...
...been directly called by name.
It's in the paper, your name is in the paper, that's why. I would, I would never intentionally have anybody go, you know, do that to somebody else, all that stuff was on, on public information and, you know, you're more than welcome to go back through all the Facebook stuff and never, never have I ever spoken anybody's name, nor would I, especially being, you know, I'm wanting to be a neighbor to this business, I don't want to have a feud, I don't want to, you know, no hard feelings, I, I want to prove to the Strombergs and everybody else that this, this is a professional business, it's not a bunch of hoodlums, it's not a bunch of criminals. Everything that they don't want to happen, neither do we. All those negative things that have been said are not good for our business either and I guarantee you, we will, we will handle that as well, we don't, you know, we don't want people loitering in front of the building, we don't want people, you know, causing a ruckus, that's, that's not what our establishment's for, it's for people to come and get a, a safely professionally performed service where, you know, they're, they're welcome, they're safe and comfortable to get that service. And again, you know, I'm, as, as she was, I'm, I'm getting a little worked up too because it's, I'm, I'm really, I'm not a fighter, I'm not, I'm a peace-loving individual and I'm, I'm a logical person, these, these things don't, don't make sense to me and it's, it's unfortunate and, you know, I was afraid things were going to go that route, but I, again, I would, I would get on Facebook time and time again and ask those people directly, hey, you know, you, if you don't have any business with this person, leave them alone. And I spoke to, at this, at the, the other commissioners' meeting, everybody is entitled to their opinion, no matter what, so. On topic, the only, the only thing I saw in these, in these conditions, the only thing I was going to speak about was on number three on the, on the partition, where I currently work in Wichita, we have four foot, about as high as this table here, most of, most of tattooing is done two and a half to three feet off the ground and I would say, from where you're standing to where I am, is, is close to the approximate distance of the lobby to where I would be set up to work in this proposed area and if I could just demonstrate...
Can't pull this?
I guess you can't. This is what you would see if, if this were, you know what I mean, you, you can only see the top of my head, really, the only way to see the procedure would be to come directly and you have to go around the front desk that we have to get off and up and actually come up to the wall and peer over and the reason this is, is because if anybody were to come in to ask a question that, that my front person may not be able to handle, you know, I can easily, you know, I can still communicate without compromising anything, I don't have to leave my area, you know, we can still talk, it is, you know, completely blocked off in the public, like I said, until you come up to this wall here to be, actually be able to look over. I'd be able to demonstrate that in the shop once, once the partition is, is put up and also, you know, optionally, we could have something to where if any other parts were a little bit more risque, say, you know, on, on a woman's side where, where some, some breasts may be an issue, again, you know, we could extend that up, but for the most part, you know, most tattoos that I do are performed on the arms, legs, appendages of that nature and just to clarify, I don't tattoo on or near genitalia, that, that was another thing in there, I'm not comfortable with it and I don't think my wife would be either, but other than that, everything looks good and if you could, you could consider possibly with, with a four-foot partition with maybe an addition that could go on top of it if there were, you know, any other procedures that were, that would require that, but again, you know, most of my work is two to three feet off the ground and it wouldn't be visible from the public without directly being in my work area, so, that's all I have, is there any questions?
And just, just to clarify that from, what we did was we had done a review of, of the state laws and the state laws do not require this per se, they, they do require, they have certain circumstances where they require a, a separation and they specifically use the term solid partition, so we just pulled that from that.
Right.
Since that time, I've had conversation with Mr. Ritchie, who is the, involved in the body piercing and he indicated that in his establishment in Wichita, they have a, what he suggested was the possibility of extending a rod across the width of the tenant space and having a, a non-seethrough curtain that could be pulled across, separating the, the front window and the waiting area from the working area and so, that's really a judgment call for you as to what is practical and what, what you're attempting to accomplish there, which we interpreted providing some screening or privacy between the work area, the waiting area and the public window. So, that was, was drafted based on language we saw in, in state regulations that don't apply specifically to separations between waiting areas and work areas, but we just seized on the word solid partition. So that, that's not mandatory, it's just what we suggested and what, what we weren't suggesting was that Mr. Raven Camp go in and put a 14-foot tall wall permanent between the two areas because this building does have 14-foot ceilings.
And if I may, that, that, Mr., where, where he will be, he would be in the building performing the, the piercings is further behind me against the back wall, which is further away from the public. In, in body piercing and stuff, he, he will have somebody, you know, standing up, looking in the mirror, things of that nature, so that, you know, that's, that's why, you know, he's, the curtain thing does apply to him because again, those, those things may be in view, you know, further higher than, you know, higher than four feet.
So, yeah, that's, that's where, that's where the six, that's where the six foot came from.
Yeah, right.
But that is simply a judgment call for you is what, what you're trying to accomplish with that, we use the term solid partition or demising wall because we pulled that out of language in, in some of the state regulations where, where you have mixed uses in the same space.
Right.
Were we just stating that the state law...
No, this is not, there is not a state requirement that waiting areas and working areas be separated, they, they have a requirement that if, if you had a single building or tenant space and you had, whether it was a separate office or, I, I read of one case where there was a convenience store with a tattoo parlor attached, then they require that there be a solid partition between the two separate businesses, but I just used that terminology that I saw in there and put it in this suggested condition, but it is not a state law requirement. So if, you'll notice that in the second part of that, we used a movable side obscuring curtain and that language could certainly be used in the first part as well, it's simply a judgment call for you.
Well, I, I personally wouldn't have a problem with a side obscuring curtain, if you go to the ER, they have the same thing there, you know, a curtain wouldn't hurt my feelings there. I, I guess I have a little bit of a problem, this is a sensitive issue and, and, you know, you're going to be under a...
Oh, absolutely.
I think that four feet, I don't know if I think that's quite comfortable enough, you know, but, and certainly there's ways that you can know when customers come in and stuff, you can put a photo on...
I, I was just stating that, you know, where I've worked before, I mean, that's pretty much the standard, you know, again, I will be working right up against the wall as well, so, I mean, you know what I mean, we're, we're willing to do whatever, I'm just telling you what is used now and has worked, it's, you know, again, without somebody coming around behind our front desk and coming up to the wall, you know, four feet does cut off all that view, but again, unless you're a good 10-feet tall, but, you know, we're willing to, we're willing to do whatever, I, it was just a suggestion, I mean, that's, that's what I would like, you know, that's what I would be comfortable with so I could keep an eye on my business a little bit more, I mean, I will have a front person taking care of the public, but, you know, where I currently work now is, it's kind of the same situation, somebody has a question they want to ask me personally, I don't have to stop what I'm doing, get up, you know, you know, I can continue what I'm doing and just answer a question real quick, see who I'm dealing with and, you know, still have that, that customer's privacy and again, you know, if, if need be, something else can be put to, to extend it a little higher, depending on the situation.
Do you believe there to be, always be more than one person working there, given the, I mean, our concern would be loitering and I can see that depending on the height of the wall, it's hard to manage what's going on out front in the building.
Right.
If you're behind...
Something I can't see.
Something that he, that the tattoo can't see, so that's, I'm, I'm wondering if, if there would ever be a point where you could be doing a tattoo and yeah, there are means to have a buzzer on the door that, you know, somebody's in, but if there are four or five people that have congregated out in front, he's going to be responsible for that yet while he's doing a tattoo that could take 30 or 45 minutes or an hour.
Right.
You can't really see what's going on out front based on a six-foot wall.
And, and again, you know, it could be, you know, it could be a, a conditional thing, you know, if, if you find that when you come and I could demonstrate if it's not acceptable to your liking from all angles of, you know, possible viewage, you know, we can, we can definitely work with, with the city on that, we're willing to do anything really, so.
Could make that a staff discretion. Under discretion, I'm comfortable with that. Consider, when we get to the motion.
Staff discretion, yeah.
It could read a solid partition or demising wall of four feet with a movable side obscuring curtain with the rest of the height.
Right. Okay.
Yes, we, we did not specify height, thought we would leave that to your judgment.
Other questions of this speaker? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public that'd like to comment and we can go back to the applicant as well?
Yes, the only thing I'd like to say is, is I would like to apologize to you for the, anything negatively said towards the Strombergs because obviously, this is not what I wanted to see was any, any negatives, although it is, like everybody says, it's a sensitive issue and, and I, I feel bad that people... everybody says, uh, i- it's a sensitive issue, and, and, uh, I, I feel bad that people, um, say things the way they do, and, uh, and I, I don't think it's fair for, for, uh, the Strombergs to, to have to deal with that. So, I, I, uh, I want to apologize to them for, for, for that happening to them, and, uh, because I don't want any hard feelings with them, and, and it's, it's just, uh, you know, strictly business, and, and, uh, it shouldn't go to the emotional level that, that it did. So, uh, just, just wanted to say, um, I'm sorry that, that that did happen. So, that's it.
Appreciate you putting that in the record. Any other comments from the public? I'd like to bring it back to the commission then. And, uh, gentlemen, if you have, uh, any further questions or comments about this application?
Mr. Chairman, I have several, or at least three areas of comment that I'd like to, uh, bring up. First, regarding the applicant, Mr. Raven Camp, I do want to emphasize that I appreciate the fact that he's done a lot personally in investing in, uh, in downtown and making downtown a more viable place. I particularly appreciated when he saved the old Firestone Building, which is currently at, uh, in use as, uh, through a second remodeling, actually, as the Surgical Arts Center. I really appreciate his Fifth and Walnut Complex of storefronts and shop. And I really also appreciate, right across the street here, where he saved the wood fashion cleaners and turned that into the Wood Fashion Plaza as a viable retail and office location. I also appreciate the fact that this particular building is, uh, which has pretty interesting architectural character, the terracotta front, the brick has been well preserved under Mr. Raven Camp's care. I'm a little concerned, well, I'm very concerned by the fact that when the petition was presented on this whole issue, uh, several weeks ago, there were a number of people on Santa Fe who have invested lots of time, lots of money in businesses over the last 10 to 15 years, that were opposed to this use, uh, especially opposed to this use on the main streets downtown. I went ahead and voted for the change in the zoning, to allow this sort of use in the greater downtown in C4. But I think, and this, I think this really relates to, uh, the seven findings of fact that we are to make here today. The second finding of fact is the most suggestive, or most subjective, and the one that, uh, is most worthy of discussion, I think. I think, uh, the project and the findings of fact as presented by staff are excellent in every case, except number two. The proposed conditional use at the proposed location will contribute to and promote the welfare of the public, or will contribute to and promote convenience of the public. I think there's a large segment of the public that would prefer that this particular use not occur on our two main streets, Iron and Santa Fe. I think it's, in the matter of convenience, it's good to have related uses located close to one another. It's almost ironic, it's almost humorous, that the sponsor owns a building at Fifth and Walnut, which I think would be a good location for this, and which is conveniently located across the street from one of the services that removes tattoos. And I think that that would've been a much better location, and I don't know why that wasn't suggested to, uh, the potential tenants as a location. So, we have, we don't have a, an actual, uh, resolution in front of us, but, uh, I'm assuming that since all our other loving conditions make sense and are acceptable to the applicants, that, uh, most likely we will see a, a motion to approve this with conditions. But I, uh, I will vote against it on the basis that for a portion of the, of the populace, this is not a desirable location for this sort of work. It's not, in that sense, promote the general welfare of the community, and that from the convenience aspect for the potential clientele, it is certainly no better than other, other locations within the C4 district, and even other locations owned by the same applicant.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Okay. I thought he did still own that building. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's been, it's been a particularly difficult decision for me, too, and, and I probably will line up in support of the application. But I want to share that, that my concerns are, are these. I, you know, I long for the day when we still have Duckwall Alco downtown. I long for the day we have department stores like Jones and Macy's. I long for the day when we have numerous restaurants and movie theaters, and RX soda shops on every corner, and five-star hotels downtown, numerous banks, Penny's, Sears, Montgomery Ward, things most of us don't even remember today being downtown. I wish those days were here. But we've had a paradigm shift over the past few years, and that shift has been towards empty storefronts, and once beautiful buildings being deteriorated over time. And, and I think that we're, we're standing here poised to see the next future of downtown, so whatever that will be. And I, I think I have to respect the Lee District's, um, proposal that this be approved. I, I have my personal feelings about it, but setting those aside, it's a legal business. It's a business that has passed the commission as far as being approved downtown. Now, we're just talking about location, and, and I'm not sure, to some, there would never be a location that would be good, and to others, any location would be okay. I just hope that if this passes, and that these people established a respectable and trustworthy business that sets an example for all, that any kind of business that's legal can be operated downtown successfully and, and with, uh, respect.
Others that would like to comment?
I'd like to say, I, I tend to defer to the, um, to the Lee District Governing Board as well. And my opinion of this whole thing has changed greatly since I started. I, I, you know, I'm not a tattoo person. Um, uh, I, I had, uh, my, my daughter, when she turned 18, wanted a tattoo. And, uh, God, it was like, the day afterwards, she, she said, "Dad, I'm gonna go to Manhattan, I'm gonna get a tattoo." She said, "Would you design it for me? I have a sign business, so design is one of my things." And so, I, I had the luxury and the pleasure of that, and, uh, I, uh, I, I think a little bit differently about them. So, I, I have family members that have them. But, um, more importantly, when I talk to Phil, Kleeman, and some of the other downtown members, I, I think that a tattoo parlor adds to what, what, one of the things that they want is a vibrant downtown that has multicultural-type offerings and entertainment districts. And, and I, I see that as maybe tying into that somehow. And, uh, I, I'm ready to give them, give them a chance. And, and I guarantee you, you're gonna be under the microscope to the nth degree. So, I, I wish that, uh, if your application is approved, that you live up to the, uh, wishes and the findings of this board. And, um, uh, I will read number 11, just so that you're clear on this. Uh, so, subject conditional use permit may be modified or revoked by the planning commission if it is determined that the applicant or the applicant's representative intentionally or unintentionally committed, committed a material misrepresentation of fact, um, in the application process, or, um, the application of the tattoo body piercing establishment is maintained so as to constitute a public nuisance. So, um, there's, uh, certainly some weight that this, that this commission has, and, uh, there's certainly some, uh, weight in the conditional use permit that can be revoked. And I, I think the gentleman here right there is gonna be probably as, as tough as this commission. Uh, so, anyway. Uh, with that, if there's no other discussion, I would make a motion.
Please do.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we approve application CU 11-7 with the, um, addition on number three, that, um, after the word private body part, uh, is, uh, should be as described in Salina Code, Section 6-47-15-1, and with the applicant to work out the height of the, uh, partition and the material of the partition with the city staff, uh, to their, uh, liking.
And before there's a second to that, do we want to direct the staff to summarize for adoption findings of fact, uh, in this case?
Yes, we do.
Uh, we can, uh, what my suggestion is, is that really you're, you're doing a hybrid of, of option one and option two, and any motion in support, um, one thing that you could do, and see if you're in agreement with these, and then, um, what we would ask, I think, for this case and, and perhaps future, is that we will take these findings of fact and, and include them in the minutes of the meeting. Um, so then you'd have opportunity, uh, to, to see that they're done in, in support of your action or motion. Um, but the, uh, the findings, as it relates to complying with the regulations of the C4 district, uh, based on city commission action, this is a permitted use, subject to a conditional use permit in the C4 district, as it's been amended. Um, the C4 district is designed to provide a district for a broad range of retail shopping facilities and other businesses. There's nothing about this property itself that does not conform with C4 district requirements. The operators will be required to comply with all applicable State of Kansas health and safety requirements governing businesses engaged in, in this activity. Um, the space and location, as reviewed, is capable of, of meeting the health code requirements for these types of establishments. Um, as to condition number two, or item two, finding two, mentioned by Commissioner Perny, um, this proposed tattoo parlor and body piercing studio would put a vacant downtown tenant space into active use. It would diversify the business mix downtown and increase customer traffic in the downtown area. As to injury to, uh, other property in the neighborhood, the conditions of approval, as, uh, drafted and recommended by staff, are intended to ensure that the activities at 111 East Iron remain compatible with the character and land use mix in the downtown area. Um, as to the, uh, nature and intensity of this use, uh, we're talking about a 14-foot by 50-foot tenant space, and based on the size of that space and proportion to the remainder of the building, um, it should not generate business activities at a level that's incompatible with surrounding businesses due to the limited work area. Um, off-street parking is available on, uh, Fifth Street, Iron, and in the city-owned parking lot to the north. Tattoo parlors are not considered to be a high-traffic generating use. Uh, there should be no impact on public utilities or public services. No change to the building footprint is proposed. Uh, there should be no impact on drainage. And as far as, uh, looking at adequate access, there are no private driveways. All traffic entering and leaving the business will be foot traffic. So, uh, those were the, uh, findings of fact that could be offered in support of your action.
Well, that's quite exhaustive. Um, should we add to it that the Lee District had, uh, expressly approved it?
Uh, that can be made part of your, your findings that the Lee District Board has recommended.
Any comments from the other commissioners on the summary? And if there being none, or Commissioner Mike Sell, are you comfortable with, uh, that list as a piece of the motion?
Yes.
With that added, is there a second to the motion?
I'd second that motion.
Okay. It's moved, been moved and seconded. Uh, all those in favor of the, uh, recommendation with the conditions, staff recommendation conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
And one opposed?
That motion carries six to one.
Other matters?
Or other matters, um, now that we've become highly educated, um, we've been asked, and it is appropriate to expand beyond the boundaries of the C4 district, and to look at our C3, C5, and other commercial districts. Um, presently, um, because of the focus was solely with the Puma Plan and with the Lee District Board on the C4 district, tattoo parlors are nowhere, uh, mentioned anywhere in the Salina zoning ordinance, except for the C4 district. So, we would, um, like the planning commission to authorize the, uh, filing of a, uh, application for text amendment to review the, uh, other commercial districts and their characteristics, and to, uh, look at the wheres and under what circumstances tattoo parlors should be allowed outside the central business district. And, uh, it might be appropriate in, in that, uh, context to look at some of the things that the, the Strombergs brought up about Wichita and the separation requirements. That may be more appropriate in some of the other commercial areas than it is in the downtown area. So, um, I guess we would like, as an other matter, to have you authorize that, uh, text amendment, so you can review that. The other question that will confound staff that we'd like you to address is that presently, you may do a, uh, one-chair barber shop or beauty shop in your home as a home occupation. And we're certain the question will come up, "May I do a tattoo parlor or body piercing studio in my home as a home occupation?" And so, we have a list of both permitted and prohibited home businesses or home occupations, and, uh, we've reviewed some. For instance, the State of Iowa prohibits tattoo parlors from being located within dwellings, but the State of Kansas has some guidelines for when that occurs. So, uh, it's not prohibited by state law. It would be up to the local jurisdiction whether that should be a permitted home business. Um, so, with the consensus of the commission, we would, we would initiate that as a text amendment to look at our other areas outside the central business district.
Would you like a motion to that effect?
If we could have a motion to authorize that application to be filed, we'll bring that back for further study.
I'll make that motion, and I'll look on with curiosity how you address the 200-foot when it's in a commercial district from residential, but possibly allowed in a home. How you're gonna, the 200-foot will be, uh, difficult to deal with there. So, I'll make the motion.
That would be pretty difficult to reconcile.
Yes.
So, that, but, um, we, we don't want to be, uh, faced with that decision as a staff. That's, that's something that just needs to be addressed as part of the zoning ordinance.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign.
As far as, uh, future meetings, we have scheduled for your November meeting, uh, coming back with a, uh, plat document for the, uh, what's gonna be referred to as the Hegeman addition, which is a plat of the property, uh, for the USD 305 Operation Center out there, Cloud, Broadway, and Ninth. That property's never been platted into a subdivision, so this will come back before you for a proposed one-lot subdivision.
Can they, they acquired some more property on the corner? Would that be included in that?
No. We'll leave it, not part of the plat.
Yeah, this'll just be the area bounded by Broadway, Cloud, and, and Hegeman.
Dean, we had talked, uh, one time about having an ex officio-type member, um, of this commission, possibly a school, um, person. Is there any, been any more thought on that, or, uh?
Um, there wa, there was, I think there was being some research done additionally about, and it wasn't just planning commission, but looking at the legal ramifications and what would need to be done to have youth members. But, um, certainly, we'd be, any, anybody, we would be interested that could serve in, in sort of a liaison capacity. You certainly couldn't be, uh, appointed as a voting member or anything. But I think that's what we were looking at, is trying to identify use that would be, uh, a youth liaison. I don't recall, John, did we get anybody to submit an expression of interest form or anything? We'd had some discussions.
Uh, we did have a, a member, Dustin Shannon, who's done a lot of research on cemeteries, backgrounds of different buildings and sites in Salina, but he kinda dated out on us. He's now college age, so he's, he's unavailable. But he did express interest before then. It's just the timing wasn't there for him. He's the one I'm aware of.
This'd been a perfect issue. I'd like to hear the perspective from someone a little younger than our corporate age here. younger than our corporate age here.
Yeah, well, this has been an educational process, and I, I believe to a degree it's kind of a generational issue in terms of perspectives and, and things like that. But up until about two years ago, there was simply no regulation at all of, of tattoo parlors. And then states all across the nation started adopting health and safety standards and laws just to catch up with what was happening.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, I have a couple items I'd like to, if I could, under other.
Sure.
Now, I think it takes action, just a couple of comments. One is, I want to share with, I think I owe to the Planning Commission, I, I don't want to seem hypocritical, because at last meeting, I, or two meetings ago, I talked about paving being required on new PDD plans, and it seemed a little contrary to what I had proposed for our development with the district. And, and I don't think that maybe the Planning Commission knew that from the time it left the Planning Commission to the time it went to the City Commission, we met with staff and voluntarily on the district's part agreed to pave the entire area of our new development. So that, and because I, I think the city hadn't never had that happen, and we didn't want to set a precedence that that would be possible in future developments. So I want you to know that. And then, secondly, I, we just finished up our enrollment count and, at the, at the school district, and I bring this to you because in the last 11 years, we've went from 7,400 students down to 6,800. So we've had 550, 600 student drop in that period of time. And, and I, I would like to say they're going to other districts, but I don't think their enrollment's increased that much, and many have declined as well. Which leads me to what I think this commission might be all about, and one of the reasons I was really interested in, is I see that our city really needs to do some things to encourage young people to move here, both with affordable housing and with businesses that can employ young people at a rate that can sustain the lifestyle that they would like to live or, or deserve to live. And, and I don't think communities today can just stay status quo. I think this is indicative of what's happening in many communities. It's either, it's either one of two things. Families having smaller, less children, which we know is probably likely, and the other one is aging of a community. And, and so I just, I'm hopeful that we work with the Chamber of Commerce and the city, and, and our district and others to, to develop a community that's, that's inviting for young families to move here, because that's what'll bring the energy back to our city and bring the development that we deserve. And frankly, with that will come good, high-paying jobs. So I just want to mention that. And as a segue into, I hope our Planning Commission can get back into discussions about corridors and interest, interest to our city, and about some long-range planning in support of the comprehensive plan.
Just as a point of information, we are on the 14th and 21st of November, we're having steady sessions with the City Commission on the comprehensive plan and what we're calling a planning primer, which would be very similar to what you had here in the way of a steady session. Except for Mr. Householdter, none of the city commissioners has had any experience serving on planning commissions or, or had much involvement in the comprehensive plan. So we're going to take that opportunity, and hopefully that will generate their interest in the same direction that you're discussing, Ken.
Would we have an opportunity to participate in that if we wanted to mow up on the comprehensive?
Yeah, we can let you, we can let you know about that, and certainly you'd be invited to attend. It'll, it'll be a steady session here in the 107B, similar, and we'll, we'll make a note to alert you to that as well.
Is there traction amongst our commissioners to continue the session that we ran short on today? I think we only covered about half of the material.
Yeah, the idea was that we had three new commissioners, and there's always a need for refresher after items like the BFR case where we just, you never stop learning. So we could, we could try to schedule, we try not, of course, this was one item, and it, it took some time, but we, we try to schedule steady sessions when you don't have a lengthy, regular agenda. So we could pick it up again on the third if, if you were open to that.
Everybody reasonably good about that?
Dean, I, I wonder, is there a, I like the language in the last paragraph, I mean, the last item on the, the staff recommendations on that. Are we, is that a possibility? We could just incorporate that into every conditional use permit?
Well, I had some discussions with that with Mr. Bankston, and I, I think, I started that, but you and I both believe that making that part of the city code as it relates to conditional use permits in general would probably be a stronger approach. He's referring to the material misrepresentation and, and that.
Yes.
We, we kind of believe that that was implied, but rather than implying it, we, we thought that we would include that for now, but we may suggest that as adding that to the, as a, as an item in the code that deals with conditional use permits.
I think it'd be very appropriate. Any other comments or questions?
I can't let Mr. Mike Sell leave till he signs some plats for me, so.
We're adjourned.
Native next meeting, you said the third?
November the third. Is that not?
Thursday.
Okay. Is it the first? Well, it would've been October 3rd, maybe. No, that would be, I get my city commission and planning commission dates mixed up, so first sounds like it would be correct.
What happens on the, we just meet on the first and third, but there's another Tuesday in November. We don't know.
It's only the first and third.
The first just said the night.
Yes.